And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did he go?
All right.
Thank you. Council meeting, George. Thank all you guys for showing up. We might have to have a school project every council meeting. So we're not by ourselves all one time. Okay, has everybody had a chance to read the minutes of the February fifth meeting of January, or February? Yep.
Move to approve.
Second?
Second, sorry.
Moved by Steve, seconded by Stuart. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Everybody get a chance to read the minutes of the February nineteenth meeting, your two over of the sewer plan. No motion?
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Jill, seconded by Mark. All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Any requests to be out of state between now and nineteenth of March?
There she is.
I don't need to go anywhere.
You gotta stay home.
What about you, Mayor?
Yeah, I have my. Okay. Unfinished business.
Did we approve both sets of minutes?
Yep.
Are you seconding the second one?
I'm with you.
I'm just, I'm catching up.
I'm sidelined.
Discussion on changing council meeting time. I guess it's up to you guys. If you would like to change, or if you put it on the agenda if you wanted to change.
What, so you brought it up, right?
Yep, and so, you know, I have a standing meeting at seven o'clock on Tuesdays. It's less important to me, I was approached by staff to bring this up and see if we can't get it within a half hour earlier. On their behalf, they're coming back to our, they're gonna be out there on a work day.
I'm, I'm fine with six thirty. I would struggle with six on some Tuesdays, but six thirty would be fine. How, how would this affect you?
That's fine with me.
So do we need a motion then, or?
I'll do, we need a resolution, but.
We'll have to do a resolution.
So a resolution at the next meeting?
Right.
Today, six thirty would have been hard, most Tuesdays it's not a problem. It's actually better because then I can usually make the end of play practice.
Okay, we will do a resolution and have it on next meeting's agenda. Okay, I would like to welcome all the fourth graders. And when you give your stand up to testify, tell us what you want. Be at the podium and give us your name.
Can I do a brief?
You bet.
Rachel Christensen here, I am the fourth grade teacher. And I just want to give this council a little background information on what we, we're doing. We started with a writing project and it was a problem and then coming up with solutions to the problem. And so, the, as we were doing our writing project, it morphed into, well, we want to be an active part of the solution and not just state problems and complain. We are going to become active in our community and one of the things that they chose to do was come speak to the city council. And then I'm gonna let them talk about some of the other things that they've been doing too. But this was student generated and their ideas, so thank you for having us here.
Thank you for being here. Hey, was asked if any of your parents want to come up on video you made?
Hello, my name is Claire Wong and I'm here from Shoto School. I'm a Shoto Schools' fourth, fourth grader. And the reason I'm here is because we have a speeding problem in our school. People are not abiding the speed limit of fifteen. Some solutions we could do is, some solutions our class has already done is wrote letters to Google Maps, wrote letters to the editor, put posters in business windows, and gave slideshows to the high schoolers. So now, we would, we come to ask you, could we get two or more speed bumps with barriers? We know that that is going to cost quite a bit of money and we could do a fundraiser. So please help our school become a safer place. Thank you for listening, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I am Gabrielle Muncha and this is Hallie Deschaux. We are here because the students of Shoto Schools are in danger. And it is not just a danger to these children that go to Shoto Schools, but also the people who play here on the weekends after school and during the summer, and the people who are driving or speeding. The speed bumps and signs that we have right now are not helping because people are not noticing the signs and they are not, and they are not following the rules of speed bumps because they're just swerving around. One thing I would like to have is to have barriers around the speed bumps we have right now so that people will stop swerving around them and that ends the reason people are swer- people swerving around is a danger is because they may hit someone who is walking around the speed bumps. Another thing that I think would help is bigger and more noticeable signs that people will notice and they will probably help our school become a safer place. We know that this is going to cost a lot of money and we are, and we as fourth graders are willing to do a fundraise, fundraiser such as a penny war. Thank you for listening to, to my concern and I hope you can help us make our school a safer place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gabrielle, I need to address what Hallie's got.
Hallie would also like to hang, we have been writing letters to Google Maps, as Claire mentioned, and putting up posters. And Hallie would like to put her poster up here so that people will notice that it was approved by the city council.
Do we need a motion?
So, just asking the student, or the city council to consider maybe being able to post this slide somewhere in here.
Sure.
Thank you. From, no, thank you. You can set it down up here if you want.
Yeah. Good job.
Hello, my name is Gil Garison. I'm ten years old and I go to Shoto Schools. And I hear about speed bumps. I know we already have speed bumps there, but they're too far apart and people can swirl around them and speed up and go right over them. So that is why we need them strategically placed at the elementary and high school crosswalks. Some of our classes are already putting up posters and business windows, writing letters to Google, um, giving slideshows to the high schoolers about speeding and other things. And we know this will cost a lot of money, so fourth grade is willing to do a fundraiser, say for example, a penny war. In conclusion, we are only fourth graders and we are doing everything we can, but we need your help too. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is David. I am a fourth grader from Shoto Elementary School. I care because I have a huge concern. People keep on speeding past our school zones. This is a big danger to the people that come to our school. We have speed bumps, but there's enough room in between them for people to speed up. If, we know that these will cost money. If you cannot come up with enough money, you could do a fundraiser such as a penny war. If we do get these speed bumps, we would like them strategically placed from the Shoto, the elementary and high school crosswalks. Our class has already done multiple schemes to solve this problem. We have put up posters around town. We have written letters to Google to change their route. We have written to the Canada to inform the public and we have given speeches to high schools. In conclusion, please help us with this positive change. Thank you, thank you for listening, any questions?
Have you heard anything back from Google?
Um, no. I'm sure the same thing that you have, but yes, we are doing it electronically and then sending it snail mail too, which I've heard is probably not as effective, but we've sent, I think, four, three or four letters right now. I've got a couple more that kids are finishing up. So yeah, we are, we've done our best with Google. Well, we won one ballot.
Yeah, Paul has won one ballot, we, because Google map didn't show that you could go around the south into the courthouse. They showed the route of poking you out of town. We didn't have show going around the courthouse.
Let's talk about that.
Okay, sounds good, alright.
Hello, my name is Ellen Thompson. I'm from Shoto Elementary School and I'm ten years old. There are speeders in Shoto Schools, which is not okay. We would like to get two more speed bumps because the ones we have are too far apart. We're also writing to Google Maps, we are also writing to the Canada, and we are making posters to hang up in this school. If you cannot pay for the speed bumps, we could have a fundraiser, just like a penny war. If we get the speed bumps, we put them by the end of the elementary and high school crosswalks. Do you have any question? Thank you for listening, do you have a question?
Good job.
Good job, Emily.
One question for Mike. What, what were those speed bumps? Do you remember what they cost?
A piece or two of both. Like twenty-five hundred dollars.
For the two of them?
So, okay, could I give this all? But you know, that's also something we could address with our, our student council.
Would you, would you just give them a quick rundown on how a penny war works?
Yes, can we have maybe cadence going then? I can get that way, one more and chop it a bit and then we can answer some questions. Oh, oh, Brianna, you have two more. You're so quite bad there.
He's first.
No, you can go, honey.
Oh, it's okay.
It's great, you're doing just great.
Hello, my name is Ken Splendish. I am ten years old and I go to Shoto Elementary School. My class has been trying to prevent the speeding problem for a long time now. We've been trying to prevent the problem by asking Google Maps to change their route to go through Main Street and not through the school zone. We have also made posters for business windows around Shoto. We have made slides for the high schoolers to teach them not to speed. We have written some letters to the Canada also. We can, we can give us for two more speed bumps. If you cannot afford all of them, you could do a penny war. Through the schools and the speed limit is fifteen miles an hour, but people are going thirty or fifty miles an hour. I've seen people almost hit little kids and I'm concerned that one of, one little kid might get hurt. Please help, lives may be at risk. In conclusion, we need two more speed bumps. Thank you for, for listening to my speech.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Brianna Cassell and I'm a Shoto Elementary fourth grader that's trying to solve a problem, which is drivers continue to speed through the school zone. If we want to solve this problem, we should put strategically placed speed bumps closer to the elementary and high school because they are too far apart, so drivers still have to speed up. That's why I came here to ask you if we could get a couple more so drivers would slow down. If you cannot afford them, we could do a penny war. We have tried putting up posters and writing letters to Google and the editor. And some of us have been doing slideshows to the high schoolers. In conclusion, can you please help us get more speed bumps so we can put an end to this problem? Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Can you maybe break up and explain a penny war? Oh. Alright.
You got one back too, didn't you?
Well, technically she's not on the scale, but explain it. Do you want to explain the penny war? You and maybe, um, Hallie can come up and explain a little bit about what a penny war is and how that works.
Hi, my name is Addie Christensen and I'm Hallie Deschaux. A penny war is where we have the classes go against each other to see who collects the most coins for a fundraiser. Each class tries to bring in as many pennies as we can and in the end, we all have, we count up all the pennies that they have and the winner gets some kind of prize. And then we will go link them to you.
Okay, so do pennies add up very much, very quickly?
No.
So what do other classes do, guys? Do bringing?
They sabotage us. Yeah, any of them.
They can bring in nickels, dollars, and then that counts against your total as a class, but so there's some strategy. We keep track, we usually do a penny war about a week long. And then they, um, so if you bring in pennies, you get a positive total. If you bring in silver or paper, that goes against your total, but all that money goes in as for the collection of money. And in the past, yeah, but we subtract and it turns into a competition, who can end up with the most positive amount of money? Even though there's, um, it's not just pennies, there's other, um, nickels and dimes. Um, who's in student council? We've done penny wars before. Do you remember about how much money we've earned before? Last year, we earned about. On one penny war, it was like three hundred dollars?
Yeah.
So it's, it's, you do a couple of those and you can get a pretty good chunk of change. So how many pennies would we need for twenty-five hundred?
Yeah, twenty-five hundred times one hundred.
A lot of pennies, doesn't it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, are there further questions from the council for our students?
Have you guys done any research? You said you presented to high schoolers. Is it high schoolers who are speeding or are there other people who are speeding?
Some high schoolers have been speeding. And there could be some other people because.
Um, the high schoolers were pretty honest, from what I understand, they asked, you know, kind of in a random survey, how many of you are speeding? Who gave, who's given some high school presentations? What did you say about, of the class about how many raised their hands and they were?
About zero. Seven. Like all of them? Yeah.
That's not right.
I guess, you know, this kind of just started as we were talking about, you know, what can we look around in our community as a, a problem and what would we do to solve it? And, and the conversation kind of stemmed from that and, um, as the council notes, because I've written, I had some issues in the summertime, which is with our tourists more than our locals. But at the same time, I've seen some of our locals scooting right through there and it would just became a, a concern that I shared with the students of my own and then they were like, yeah, yeah, we've seen it, this happened to my mom and this happened to me, I've seen this. And so it really did stem from a, a writing project, but then they, they, they saw this as an opportunity to become, um, to do things for their community and for their school.
And they actually kind of had a vote with like some different options and most of us voted for this problem.
Cool. Yeah, I mean, like, with Main Street Montana project that we got going on at State's kind of favorite. There's a possibility of talking that off some signs. There's.
So that's, so what the mayor referring to is, we're working with the Montana Department of Transportation, Mike, Mayor and I, and a couple other people to get signs keeping people away from the Seventh Avenue.
Mayor, we need more speed signs put there. I mean, they seem to be pretty open. Wow, I won't say that, but we haven't heard that.
You know, and we see the blinky light of slowdown, you know, for somebody like me who might be just a dream and then all of a sudden, oh my gosh, I'm in the school zone. And unfortunately, you know, we're always going to have people that don't obey the laws, but I think the safety of our children and the people that do use our school, because it is used year round, that we need to consider doing as much as we can as fourth graders, writing our letters, getting involved with, um, what we can do if we, we need to write to Google or to the Department of Transportation. See, I'll, see if I'll talk to you and we can do another little writing project.
When you write to Google, bring up the safety of the.
Oh, we did, we hit this hard, didn't we, guys?
We put danger. Uh, one of the main things that, one of the main times that they speed at is at night. Yeah. So they don't realize children are.
Before and after school too?
So.
And we're gonna make, we're making your summer problems a little worse, because supposedly we're supposed to be out in the sign that says Glacier Park put up Wolf Creek.
Oh, great.
Trying to route more people through that.
Well, our goal is to get people down Main Street. That's what we want, isn't it? We want, we want our businesses to be recognized and, oh my gosh, look, there's a Hallmark store, let's stop in, you know, there's a history.
So that's a good piece of information.
There are people that don't know we have gas stations.
Yep, it's a safety issue, but from the city's perspective, it's also an economic issue. You guys know what economic means?
Are you listening?
Equal, equal all to?
No, it's, it's money, you know, like the economy, right? So people go down Seventh Avenue Northwest, go by the school, and they don't go downtown, and they don't go to the restaurants or the gas station. So there's multiple factors to this for us.
And we did talk about that, didn't we, guys, about how this could, if we could get Google to change our maps, how it could help our little town a little bit.
We get more business.
Get more business, exactly.
And people will see our posters.
Yeah.
That too, sure.
Well, once again, we want to thank the city council for allowing us to have a part of a civics lesson along with, um, giving us the opportunity to practice speaking.
Well, thank you for what you've done.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And if nothing else, in six or seven years, you can solve some of that problem.
There you go.
Don't speak.
Don't speak. And when you're adults, we'll need city council.
That's right. There you go. That's right.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Don't be afraid to come back.
Hey, you know what? Why not? We might be back with more ideas.
That's great. We like to hear them.
Thank you again, guys. Thank you very much. And, okay, contact. Thank you again, coming and supporting your causes.
Fairly obvious issue, girl. More, more deer.
Alright, do you want me to give them a rating?
You know, if you look at the.
Let's go, girls, bundle up, we got room. I can carry six.
Thank you.
Thank you, not a big car. Congratulations on your award. Well, tomorrow's the actual big day where they come and film us. I'm like, can't you just film the kids playing on the beach and we'll call it good? Alright. Um, it's a little empty here in here.
Thank you for taking these doors.
You're welcome.
We just, like, we're gonna come to the council. We're gonna try not to speak this, but that's all we're gonna tell you. I was like.
No, I'm not sure what it was for.
Next thing on the agenda, I think everybody saw in our packet, we do have a letter of resignation or lean on the board authority board. I don't know, do we have, I guess, a motion to accept it?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
You know anybody that wants to be on the board authority? Has any interest in being on board authority? Tell them to get all, me, Steve, either one, or what can? Okay. Oh, we must have a resolution in our packet, I take it? This is our new gas tax, we have to tell them what we're using the money for.
So this, this was the thing that we knew that was coming.
It's the same as last year, we're just gonna have to do this every year.
Every year with our new gas tax.
It will be thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty cents.
Thirty-nine, nine, thirty-three?
Twenty.
Twenty-three.
Mike's trying to figure out how I could spend that.
Yeah.
Oh, I got it.
I move that we prove, approve resolution number eight-three-four.
And second?
Moved and seconded, we approve resolution eight-three-four, is there any discussion?
So does it say in the resolution?
Who moved? I did. Steve, second.
I'm second. Does it say in the resolution what we're actually using it for?
No.
I thought we had to tell them what we were using it for.
In the grant application itself, I just need to, what we say, what I said and what we said last year is, it doesn't have to be very specific. It just says to be, to fun, to be funding, we're, a citywide maintenance project. We can use it to move snow. I mean, just as long as we're doing something, we can't buy equipment with this.
Well, okay, you can't pay employees with it.
Yes, you can.
You can't, yeah. So it, it seems like in previous discussions, this was money we were getting and then they changed the way we were doing it. So they called it a grant now.
Yeah, it's yearly, it is based on.
Based on gas.
Gallon gas.
Gas.
No, well, statewide.
Yeah.
They take all of, all the statewide taxes goes into one pool. It's distributed by population.
Gotcha.
So.
And street footage, right? Or is that different?
No, the other one is.
The other one is, okay.
It's our population, so as we shrink in popu-, we don't necessarily shrink.
But everyone else is bigger.
As everybody else grows.
So each unit is smaller.
So then they've got to proportion that out, so that's.
Yeah.
But this one, they, they've got like two or three different factors. The other one is just your footage and that, as cities grow every year, goes down. This one will kind of keep it a little closer.
And this one will bump up again next year.
Next year, another penny, I think, on each.
It's a half set is on diesel next year.
Probably.
So it, it should go well. We're really, we'll probably stay real close to where we're.
Yeah, I would, they, they told us to budget more than we did and everybody was a little surprised by the lower number, but it's gonna depend on, on your tourist year.
Well, when you look at.
You have forest fires and, you know, all that uses a lot of fuel.
Our tourist year started a month and a half late this last year.
So, but they'll be close, I think.
See, now we have the boring stuff, kind of. Okay, everybody had a chance to look at the claims.
Yep. Yep, I think everyone signed.
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve the claim.
Second?
Moved by Jill, seconded by Stuart. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Claims are approved. Okay. Public Works Director.
Um, everybody should have a report. Not much to say at Wake Water, because you were all there last week except for Dan, so, but, um, good news is, uh, we're seeing a little less flow than we did last year this time. So that's good, um, hopefully that trend will continue. We're looking into, um, when you guys. So, that's good. Hopefully, that trend will continue. Um, we're looking into, um, when you guys were.
Com- comparable.
So, but, um, yeah, it, it's, uh, that, that's encouraging. Um, sample, sampling went overall pretty good, but as you can see, the percent removal wasn't that good. But our, our actual, what we're putting out is good water. I mean, those are good results, it's just that it ain't like VOD of twenty-four.
Well, yeah, like you were saying out there, it's kinda hard to get, what, what do you have to get, eighty-five percent removal? When it's that low of a number.
Yeah, and it's, it's tough. So, and we're still chasing that money from the new store camera. Jody's been working hard on it. Um, the primary funding agency we've been going after has been fairly non-committal. We're gonna kinda give him a deadline on Friday, say eight or nine, so that we can move forward, either looking for other funding sources, or hopefully, maybe they'll just get on board, and we'll go ahead and get the thing going.
Are you at liberty to say which entity it is?
What's that?
Are you at liberty to say which entity it is that you're having trouble with, or?
But it's not really trouble, it's just, even, even, it, it, it's.
They just can't make up their mind.
Yeah, it, it.
It's one of those Frenchies.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a gray area if it, if it works in there, what they can fund. If it's O and M, or if it's actually.
Is, is it a state agency, or?
No, it's, it's one that we're working with right now, it's, it.
Yeah.
So, while we're on wastewater, Mike, and it probably, the answer's probably, it depends, but we talked about.
No, no, it depends on the wastewater.
We, uh, receiving a violation, like, you talked about violations. When we do get a violation, what does that cost?
Fifty bucks?
For a viol-, uh, it depends on the violation, and now we are not under an MLC anymore, so we won't get fined as we.
We'd still get a violation, but we wouldn't get a fine.
Right, we were getting fined per violation depending on what it was. We, we, we have been released.
We haven't gotten any yet.
Yeah, I just didn't know if that was like a five thousand dollar violation, or a fifty dollar, you know what I'm saying?
I think so, we're coming down the pipe, and that's like, I don't think they'll.
We won't get fined for that.
There'll be a letter, saying, hey, quit doing that, you're violating, but.
That's sort of what we're trying to do, is to quit doing that.
They're still working on our new, on our new permit, right?
Yeah, I, I mean, it.
Does the government permit us?
There's a good chance none of you will still be on the city council.
Right.
They've been working on it since two thousand fifteen.
Even with the speed of government?
Speed of light, so. Um, water system, um, water tests all came back good. Um, we got the planning grant in for the DNRC, for the, um, P R E, that will help us.
P E R.
P E R, P E R, um, for the, uh, main street water line replacement. We're working on another one, put in with the T-Step program, T-Step program, and then.
We've got.
Couple more.
Two more that we found, that we've created.
Could be with somebody tomorrow from Great West, and hopefully, um, the theory is they're gonna help us for free, so, with these grants.
That'd be really nice.
Yeah, we'll see, nothing's free.
They've got.
Well, you know, I have a free.
Um, water audit, we are still losing water. About, last month was forty-six, forty-seven is about the same thing. Um, it's, it's a little bit higher than where we typically are, looking at that graph. Um, last year was outlier, because we had so many waters, we had water breaks right here, we didn't work caught right away, um.
Do we have any big leaks right now, or anything?
There's, there's one leak over by, it's south, come out of the ground, but it's pretty slow, like, I can't even, you can't tell it's even leaking right now, but it is.
No, not it?
Yeah, we're, we're. One thing that's been going on with the water, um, you guys probably heard about it, we've had a lot of service lines freezing in the ground. I think, what did we have yesterday? Eight?
Eight yesterday.
I think there's one more today.
Did, does this leave the scout hall, because there was two?
Oh, there are ten.
Ten.
Freezing in the ground.
Yeah.
Somebody else, somebody else.
It's not fun. Trust us.
The take-home message with the Canta thing, the Facebook thing, the phone call is, uh, paying ten bucks more of your water bills, a lot better than having your water line freeze.
Well, and, and just because the temperature's warm enough, doesn't mean those lines aren't in danger of freezing, yeah, so.
It's gonna get worse.
It's gonna get worse as it warms up and the frost is.
Exactly, and the frost settles in, right?
Yeah, and I, I don't know what's, why we're having such a bad time this year.
But you can't do that, so.
We had the big rise in groundwater in January, and that might have brought a lot of moisture up, and then it receded, and the frost chased it down, I don't know, but it's, to my knowledge, I don't.
So, you don't think the second coldest February on record has anything to do with it?
I mean, we're, some of these lines are six feet.
Yeah.
They're freezing.
Yeah.
So, and it, and it's gonna get worse.
Yeah.
So, ten might just be, be down. Ten, ten.
Probably is just the beginning.
Ten is just the beginning. So, ten of them that are.
I hope that people will take what we put out, and it's on the front page of tomorrow's paper too, and really think about leaving that, number two pencil stream of water running, and they're not in the building or in their house. It's not so much when you're there and you're using.
Right.
It's those periods of time like night.
Yeah, or if you're gonna be gone.
Or your business is closed, or who we can.
And, and just because you're not on the city water, doesn't mean that it, because there was a couple houses in.
Yeah, if you, if you have a pump outside.
If your pump's under your house in your basement, probably not as much of a threat, but.
I, and I did hear about one here in town that has, they have a sandpoint in their basement that had frost around it. They had frost around the edge of their sandpoint, so.
It's crazy.
So, if, like, there is someone who's out of town for several months, so their pipes are frozen, so it could be that it's frozen down in the ground.
Yeah, they're fine, it's out, sidewalk, what, talking to Steve Howard.
Almost always, I mean.
You know, uh, it seems like that from there out.
Not necessarily from the curb stop to the building, because ours wasn't, ours was not frozen out to the curb stop, but from the curb stop on to the street, not to the main.
Of course, running over, being in the street and running over that, helps drive that frost down there too, so.
Well, that's a, that's a sidewalk that people are on.
So, rather than worrying about trying some more water than the street one.
On that night, I've been flushing my toilet lots, just to. On that night, I've been flushing my toilets since I left.
After she toured the plant, she.
That's really not gonna make any difference. I appreciate the effort. Um, so that type of water, streets and sidewalks, um, as you can probably know, February's busy with snow. And I think last month I said, one of the dump trucks was down for repairs, it's backed up and running, um, and I reported on a trailer project we're working on, and that was pretty much stalled out since the snow came. And I was working on a plan and a budget for chip sealing, and that stalled out, uh, but hoping to get back on that again this week. The product, the trailer will probably be going again next week, um, and you should have in your packet, something for the tree and sidewalk work, um. Couple things came together, uh, citizen requested a meeting, and then Public Works has three items that we would like to get input on from the tree and sidewalk board, and. Um, I guess I'd ask you guys to read through that, and if you have any input, let me know.
The, the meeting actually, just so you know, I'll throw out, it's just gonna be a work meeting, I cannot pull off before I try. We've got, it, there's just too many people gone.
That's fine, because we're not trying to decide anything, we just play it's want here generally.
So, when is it? On next Tuesday, I think it's next Tuesday, but I'll, I'll let everybody know, I, I just, it, it's been a challenge, there's just lots of people traveling, so, but we can get people there for a meeting, we're gonna, we're gonna do it. We can move to a regular meeting from there.
Mike?
Any questions?
Yeah, um, so, in terms of snow removal, there's a lot of it out there. Fair amount, um, so where, where do you guys take it?
Down by the weather beater mostly.
And that's also popular, I think.
Over here by.
Behind your store.
Yeah, behind your. Dad said I was, we were gonna stash them by the hospital, but I don't think we have to.
Along my streets and that's a, right, along the school.
Long school, there, like football field.
No concerns about flooding when it warms up or anything, or?
I, I'm definitely concerned about Spring Creek right now.
Yeah, I, I was gonna ask.
I mean, it'll just depend on what the weather does and how it comes out, it may just, you know, it, it may just all drop in and be fine, um, it could plug up and have a mess. See, see what nature does.
So, what is happening with Spring Creek? Is that an ice dam further down, or is it just?
I, it's all, the whole way.
Freeze down on the bottom, runs up on top, freeze.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, you know, we, we've had some issues below the rodeo grounds in the past, and we've kind, we, we've cleaned a lot of that up, some of those bad spots, um. There's still more work to do in there, but I don't, I think, well, one, one of the problems is that those two culverts at rodeo grounds, they're small, they're frozen right now. I'm sure there's still water going through there, but it's constricted. I mean, water's still getting through right now.
Okay.
But there's a lot of restrictions, um, and there's a lot of ice.
Yeah, five or more, a little more. Let's talk, I've got like four life scouts, two meeting scout projects, so.
Yeah, that, that stretch from the, from the culverts, at the baseball fields, down to the trap club, there's a lot of just potential for project where kids wanna put on some hip boots and go pull stuff out.
That's what I did for my, your project.
Talk to Dave here.
Cause it's, it's, it's that little stuff, when it freezes, it causes problems.
I was gonna say talk to Dave here, but it's not Dave anymore, who is it?
Dan Fraser.
Oh, okay, so Dan Fraser.
He's the permanent person for Fish Wildlife Parks now, for our.
So, I figured it was still Dave, because he was out looking at it at the beginning.
Dave retired.
Cool, good for him.
Joe B.
Oh, I don't have very much, just kinda recap what Mike said, we did find some more, at the, I went to a funding class at Rural Water last week. They, they have four, four different planning grants, that I think that we can hopefully use one to match the other, so, it will be minimal cost to the city for the, hopefully, if we can, some of them are just write the grant, but you need to be standing on their steps at nine AM when they open up, so you're first.
Okay.
So, uh, there are, actually, they are coming up with, and I don't, I forgot my notes on my desk, but they have come up with a, up to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in funding for economic development grants, including job. Funding that they're, they're trying to help small communities, so, other than that, things are moving along fairly smoothly for the most part.
Did you and Tom go to a local government center, something put on by local government center, or is that coming up?
That's in May.
Oh, okay, I just saw that come through our claims, and I didn't know if that was something.
Yeah, that's in May, and, and you guys need to think about if any of you want to go, I'll get you, I don't have an agenda yet.
Is that the one in Great Falls?
No.
Yeah, I can't go.
Bozeman this year.
Bozeman this year removed it, for two years anyway.
Is it a two-day thing?
Three, for us, it's, we go Sunday morning and come back Thursday night, I think it's three days, Tuesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, right? But I don't have an agenda yet for, for elected officials.
Yeah, I can't do three days.
But I will let you know, but it, it, it is the best training for, of elected officials to stand.
It's a good, it's a good one, I mean, if you have a chance.
But I'll, I'll get that too, I haven't.
Damn part of nature and shame.
Yeah.
Yeah, he does a good job.
I, I did. So.
Council, Steve.
A couple things, uh, the Education Foundation trivia night's coming up, pretty quick here, yep, a week from Friday, and get your tickets on shotoeducationfoundation.org. And on March twenty-second at Pavilion, six-thirty PM, we're having a scout fundraiser, uh, to help the scouting move holistically, so Cub Scouts, the Boy Troop, the Girl Troop in Shoto. If you can make it, we'd really appreciate you coming. It's gonna be a free will donation with a recommendation of twenty-five dollar donation, we'd really appreciate it.
That's March twenty-second?
Yes, ma'am.
Stuart.
So, Mike, I noticed our speed limit signs aren't on.
I think got it rectified today, there's snow on.
Okay, I kinda figured that's what it was, but I noticed it this morning, and.
I think PJ cleaned them off today, I have to check, see if they're working, but I think they should be.
Okay.
I think it was just the one.
The south one. That was the only one I noticed, but I, like I said, I noticed it today, so I thought I'd say something. Um, other than that, thank you guys again for moving snow.
Here, here.
It's what, it's what we get paid to do.
I, I know, but it's, it's, it's been really nice, and, and I have heard it over and over, and I watched the crew go above and beyond, you know, what they have to do. And that's part of what makes Shoto a great place to be, is you guys taking care of the town and the citizens, so thank you.
Jill.
And if the citizens could take care of their sidewalks. If the citizens would take care of their sidewalks, it would be even better for people who walk.
I noticed when I was cleaning by your place, there's some negative ones.
That's not shit.
For you, Jill?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had one of those.
Yeah.
Um, I don't have anything other than come to trivia night, it's a blast.
Mark. I, I had a few things, but they were all mentioned, so. It's the joy of being at the end, great job.
Yeah, Mike, I was down at the pancake supper tonight, and I had about five people from the Catholic Church, said, tell your crew thank you for plowing, plowing the parking lot down there, so.
Yeah, we tried to make some parking room.
No, it was good. And I don't know if any of you heard, we've got the same old leaks in the roof on the Pavilion.
Oh, it always different.
That, that was something I was gonna put in my report, and I forgot.
I do.
We are, I've had a ins-, uh, I, I think the problem, the source of the problem is insulation in that roof and some heating issues. And I had a guy come up on Monday from Great Falls with Kleinfelter's insulation, looked at it, and came up with some really good plans on how to deal with it, and actually, we are starting on it on Thursday on the kitchen area. To redo that whole insulation in that roof up there, and should be done Friday.
Cool.
And came up with a plan for big part two, but that'll be.
Warming weather.
We need a penny more.
So, is the pals that the lady, come back?
No, we're doing penny work.
Penny work.
A little more discussion.
Citywide penny work.
We did one of those in businesses around town.
I think also, um, back to the money, um, we're gonna have to take a look at, our old IT guy didn't ever mention the fact that, um, January fourteenth, two thousand, of twenty-twenty, we're going to have to replace all but one, maybe two computers.
Three.
We might.
Cause no more takes.
No more takes. But as they were talking, by the time we, we have seven plus the server, but by the time we pay for the new licensing, and, uh, we're gonna have to take a look at things, new licensing, and then if we get a new one, and, and the installation, how much that's gonna cost. And, or we're gonna have to weigh it all, you guys are gonna have to make some decisions, because it's that, and we are out of warranty, or we move, and we get the three-year warranty, and we, so we're gonna have some decisions to make on that.
Will the I S be able to provide us with like a?
Yeah.
Are we talking about that structure?
Well, unfortunately, we're not, our structure isn't gonna be working very well for in the beginning. Um, and then with the leaks at the, or with the spring insulation and stuff at Pavilion. Um, and then with the leaks at the, or with the spring insulation and stuff at the Pavilion, we're, you know, things are coming up, you know, just so you guys are aware, and they are still looking at funding through, somewhat through the, um, our entitlement money, hopefully, this will change, but they're looking at, um, funding the attorneys where people can't pay, I can't think of the.
Public defenders?
Public defenders.
Defenders are, they're claiming the city should have some skin in the game, because.
We make ordinances.
We make ordinances, but.
It doesn't make sense, but.
That's what they're using to try to get. Public defenders, like, well, see, two years ago, were they changed, or had to hire a bunch more?
Yeah, but that is, it's not gonna be public, I know.
So.
The, the thing, hopefully, isn't that they're hoping that now they're gonna do a study as to why they're.
I have a period of license, what's going on with that bill.
I have any, so, anyway, hopefully, they'll leave it alone, but they're still threatening.
Sorry, if you happen to hear bill numbers, or anything, bill draft numbers, or anything, pass those along. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's on the sheet of papers in my folder, I left it in my drawer in the hell one.
And I think that gar- the garbage bill that actually came from this office, the request did to, we can put sewer or water on the taxes when people don't pay. We couldn't put the garbage on the taxes, because some people had it on the taxes, which didn't make a lot of sense. But anyway, um, they, they do have a bill that seemed to be moving along without much, that would make it so we actually could, everything would be consistent, we actually can put the garbage. And there's a big difference, if you take a look at some of the, what we don't have. And we can put the water on the taxes, it makes sense, so hopefully that'll go through.
And the Kowanas have committed eighty-five hundred dollars to the playground, possibly more, or.
Oh, that, is that me?
Last Friday.
Oh, it was last Friday.
I see, they canceled it. The Friday meeting and the Saturday meeting, the Sanders was to keep up their big conference, um, but they did it by email.
Right.
Oh, okay.
They've got that much, we've.
So you basically have seventeen.
Or, yeah.
And I said he's gonna go around to other individual clubs and, and pass the hat.
They were hoping to come up with some more, I've got, I talked to Cali tonight, salmon's, and we gotta get together here with, and decide, I've got a lot of different, they sent us a lot of different options. We're gonna have to pull together a little more money, and I'm gonna see, they've got a lot more money pledged than what we've got in the account right now. So we've got, I've gotta get that stuff, and see where we're at, they, you, you look at the email from the manufacturer, well, we're talking about for seventeen thousand dollars, their list price is thirty-four thousand dollars. I mean, they're marketing, they're doubling them, is what they're doing. And there's some different things in there, one, we were kinda talking about, they radiate from two to twelve years old. But there's some other ones that are really nice, that have more stuff, that are two to fi- or five to twelve. Talked to Cali, of course, she's got two boys, five. You know, so that's something we might look at, is, but we gotta get together and see what we can come up with. We've gotta make a decision by the end of March, we can get it coming, yeah. I thought maybe they'd be nice, and, you know, take a down payment, but no.
Why not?
They want it all, about eighteen hundred dollars, afraid to get it here, so. But other than that, thanking the crew for all your work on the streets and stuff, but keep our fingers crossed, and hopefully it sneaks off slowly. Our, kinda like our ten-day forecast, the end of our ten-day forecast for the last week, it's gonna get better, but it's always up there, ten days.
Just meteorologist trying to be real nice and.
It's like, make it a one. It's him preserving his life, guys, that's what it is.
It's gonna get warmer, I promise. I guess we have nothing else, the meeting's adjourned, and public commentary. Oh, it's got your wrench.
I know, usually I say no, but I, I just like to say that yes, Mike's crew's doing a great job, and if anybody doesn't like what he's doing, go to Fairfield and try to go through Fairfield.
Go to Bozeman or Missoula, they pile it in the middle of the street.
Fairfield doesn't do anything.
At least there's a pile, Fairfield's just sort of there.
Just as I was leaving the house, I was showing Andiconda, Andiconda had forty inches of snow in forty-eight hours, so.
Oh my god.
They have got the states. Pi- their pilot stole with an escalator. There's, they have got piled up at their freight, and they know where they're piling, it's gonna be a runoff problem, they have no place else to go with it. A lot of private contractors are just, I don't know, Mike's doing a great job. He didn't do the alleys this year, but I don't think.
We did, yeah.
Yeah.
I think you did my alley.
Yeah, we skipped yours. I think you're one of the only ones we didn't do, actually.
How can you do that, he's the only guy that comes.
Well, you have something to talk about, yes, you're like a.
I just realized that we missed that alley.
Well.
I was going down.
Last year you put a lot of rocks in my, my front yard, so I said. I don't need it now.
The alley, and I'll come back and get it.
See, Rich, there's just no pleasing here.
We stand here.
No.
No, I think, I think your alley was already.
Now we're here, right?
Yeah. Somebody parked it, like, turned off.
Keeps the people from the alley.
You don't get gravel.
I think the league had talked about, let's say, Hensley and P Tower, right?
What's that?
Hensley and P Tower is where the league, they get their funds from going by.